Good evening. Welcome to the Manistee City Council meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, November 16th. Please rise for the Heather, could you please take the roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Shmansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
Planning and zoning director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
I think that's everybody. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda for I don't have it. Add the Economic Development Council update. Under new business. Under new business. Do we have a second?
A second.
Public hearings. We need to
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to take a vote in.
Are they
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
It's a long agenda and I'm a little nervous. Public hearings, we have two. First, we are going to hear the public hearing for the countywide Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Networks Northwest has been working with local governments in Manistee County to update the five-year recreational master plans. This cohesive planning effort helps to ensure that the county continues to be a quality place for people to live, visit, work, and play. The state of Michigan DNR requires that municipalities have a five-year recreational plan to be eligible for various plans, for various funding opportunities. A 30-day public review, which concluded at the end of October, followed by this public hearing to gather community input, are requirements of the process to approve a five-year Parks and Recreational Master Plan. No action is anticipated at the conclusion of the public hearing, however, this matter is on the agenda for consideration later on this meeting. Do I have any public that would like to come forward and speak about the recreational plan?
Mayor, Tim O'Connor, 330 Fourth Avenue, Manistee, Michigan, also the current Chair of the Manistee Parks Commission. In reading over the proposal, I would just like to add one thing I would like to see added to that. In the very beginning, it talks about how Manistee is a beauty and natural wonder that abounds in the region's forests, lakes, and rivers that remain a constant factor and will always make Manistee a special place to live and visit. I think we're missing something. We would like to add that the ancestors of the Little River Band of Ottawa Indians were their original inhabitants of these great lands. I think they're a part of the Manistee, and for some reason, they weren't incorporated into that proposal. So somehow, we'd like to have that added. I'm not sure if that's a Manistee Parks and Recs or Committee that needs to do that, or we can get that from the City Council.
Thank you. That's a great idea. Thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward? Seeing none, we will go on to public hearing for establishing a commercial rehabilitation district. Section 207.843 of the Michigan Commercial Rehabilitation Act, Act 210 of 2005, states that a public hearing must be held prior to adopting a resolution establishing a commercial rehabilitation district. The proposed district would be a three-acre site to include the Lake Shore motel property as well as retention area to the south. No action is anticipated at the conclusion of the public hearing, however, this matter is on the agenda for consideration later in this meeting. Do I have any citizens who would like to come forward? Please step forward and state your name and address. Citizens are allowed an opportunity to speak for five minutes.
Thank you for your time. My name is Thomas Dane, Field Box 6401, Manistee. The analysis of the application for approving a commercial rehabilitation district is deficient, illegal, and should not be approved for the following reasons. As far as I could ascertain, public notice of tonight's hearing on this application for approving a commercial rehabilitation district was not providing the public a minimum of 10 days pursuant to Michigan Commercial Rehabilitation Act. Section 20C.843.Section 3-3, hence, the hearing does not comply with the requirements of the Commercial Rehabilitation Act. Number two, this hotel does not qualify as a qualified facility as defined in Michigan Commercial Rehabilitation Act, Section 207.842.Section 2-8. The Act states, "A qualified facility also includes a hotel or motel that has an additional meeting or convention space that is attached to a convention and trade center that is over 250,000 square feet in size, and this is located in a county with a population of more than 1,100,000 people." Clearly, this motel property does not qualify as a qualified facility. Number three, the purpose of a commercial rehabilitation district is to rehabilitate property. The proposed rehabilitation of this property does not comport with the requirements of the Michigan Commercial Rehabilitation Act, Section 207.842.Section 2-K. The Act clearly states, "Rehabilitation means changes to a qualified facility," just talked about it, "but are required to restore or modify the property together with all pertinences to an economically efficient condition. Rehabilitation includes major renovation and modification, improvements to floor loads, correction to deficient or excessive height, new or improved fixed building equipment, including heating, ventilation, lighting, reducing multi-story facilities to one or two stories, improved structural support, including foundations, improved roof structure and cover, floor replacement, improved wall placement, improved exterior and interior appearance of building, and other physical changes required to restore or change the property to an economically efficient condition." Clearly, the proposed raising of the existing motel and replacing it with a much larger five-to-six-story structure does not comport with either the requirements of Commercial Rehabilitation Act nor its intent. I understand that this purpose of this hearing is for the purpose of approving or denying an application for approving a commercial rehabilitation district, however, as many citizens have voiced their objections to this project, I would like to add mine within my time for the record.
Sir? Sir, five minutes is up.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Sir, can you please write your name and address on the list, please?
I will get it to the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to come forward? Okay. I don't see anybody who wants to come forward on public hearings, so I think that is closed. We're moving on to, I know this seems weird, but we're moving on to citizen comments on agenda-related items. So do I have any citizens who want to comment on the agenda related? I don't see anyone. All right, moving on to consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll invoices, notification regarding next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Heather, could you take the roll call?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. Consideration of a resolution to approve the
Mayor, we have the Economic Development Council update first.
I beg your pardon. Economic Development Council update. Dennis P. McCarthy, Barney Castle Oil and Gas.
Good evening. Thanks for welcoming us to the agenda today. My name is Dennis McCarthy. I'm affiliated with Barney Castle Oil and Propane here in Manistee County, and I'm also fortunate enough to be a member of the Manistee County Chamber Board. And a few years ago, we worked with you folks on an economic development program in Manistee County. You were the leaders to help support that model. That model includes partnership in this community between the city, the county, the DDA, the IDC, West Shore Community College, and private enterprise in the county. So thank you for your support and everything you've done to support economic development in the county and specifically in the city. The partnership in the state is unique, I think, in the county. Stacy from our chamber and Jeff Donz are going to talk a little more about that, but if you go to other communities in northern Michigan and in Michigan in general, we have a unique model between private business, local government, and education matters as well. We wanted to acknowledge there's more work to do. We appreciate all that you've done as a city council, and we're here to be engaged with you, and our team is here to talk to you tonight about what we have going on. I do want to point out that private enterprise has stepped up in the community and funded about $56,000 with the funding toward economic development on an annual basis in the county. Those funders are Munson Healthcare, James Barker, the president of the hospital, is here tonight. Another funder is Little River Holdings. Tom St. Dennis is here, their legal counsel from Little River Holdings. Martin Maretta is a funder. Jim Reifel is here, the vice president of operations at Martin Maretta. Other funders include Filer Credit Union, Barney Castle Oil and Propane, Lake Star Farms, Consumers Energy, PCA, Morton Salt, Ironfest Assillery, and the Manistee County CBB. So we really have a great partnership between all levels of government and private business in the community, and we want to thank you for your support, and I'll turn it over to Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Good evening. I really don't have a heck of a lot to add to what Dennis had to say. It's the cooperation is what I think is phenomenal that separates this group from probably ones in the past, and the county and city definitely are helping pave that way as well and organizing it along with the help of the chamber. And it's just, it's been a good cooperation. It's been a great cooperation. We've had a lot of projects, and we've had two extremely unique years going through the pandemic trying to get through some of these things as well. And in the process of that, I think, considering what we've lived through to where we are today with the things that we have teed up, hopefully to have some great new enterprises in the county and in the community. And I can tell you that from my perspective, we've put an extremely amount of effort into the city proper, if you will. Because as the city goes, as I say, people don't really care where the boundaries are. It's the greater Manistee Lake area, and as that greater Manistee Lake area goes, so goes the county. So with that, I enjoy working together with everybody in this process and trying to move the community forward. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Stacy.
Hello, Stacy Bytwork, CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, and I echo everything Dennis and Jeff Donz said tonight. I just want to let you all know, your partnership with the chamber and the community is huge because we are being watched by the state of Michigan. We hosted Quentin Messer, who is the CEO of the MEDC, came to our community. We were able to take him around, show him our downtown, the opportunities and some of the challenges we've had. We also hosted Lieutenant Governor this week, and that's a big deal for us. So the state is watching us and everything we're doing, and it's our time to shine. So I think you all, as leaders, can help support that in what you've done and the decisions you make going forward in this community. We are one of the, kind of the last untapped resources on the lake shore that I really think that we have so many opportunities here for investment. There's developers that Mark and I and our EDC board talk to daily, and they're looking at this, but they're watching the decisions made by this council and our county and kind of what direction this community is headed. So I think to attract future investment, to attract startup businesses that are here in our community, we have an opportunity as all partners to collaborate moving forward. We have a lot of momentum going on right now. Our chamber is one of the lead chambers in the state right now. We were asked to serve on a panel with Traverse City and Midland as leaders in economic development, so that's huge. So again, everyone is watching the momentum we have, so I just want to thank all of you for your support going forward and what we can do for our community in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. All right, thank you. That was actually item A under Section 8, so we'll have to change the numbering system for Okay. Moving on now to consideration of a resolution to approve the 2022-2026 Manistee County Wide Park and Recreation Master Plan. Networks Northwest has been working with local governments in Manistee County to update our five-year recreational master plan. The sections that are specific to the city of Manistee include Pages A-42 through A-46 of Appendix A and F-26 through F-29 of Appendix F. The state of Michigan DNR requires that municipalities have a current five-year recreation plan to be eligible for various funding opportunities. At this time, council could take action to adopt the City of Manistee Park and Recreation Master Plan Resolution.
I'll make that motion.
For.
Any discussion? I would like to make sure that we add the sentence that was recommended by the chairman of the Parks Commission. "The ancestors of Little River Port of Ottawa Indians were the original inhabitants of these great lands." I think that's an excellent segue into the entire plan, so we might have to modify our motion here to include that. So how do we go about doing that at this time?
Yeah. I would say approve the plan with the following, is the stated changes.
I'd make that motion.
Okay. So we don't have to rescind the first motion?
Are you amending the previous motion? If that's what you're doing, then yes. If Councilmember Shmansky makes a motion to amend the previous motion, gets support, you can vote on that and then vote on the original motion after that.
Okay.
So I make the motion that we amend the motion to include the language on our indigenous people. "The ancestral home of the Little River Band of Ottawa Indians, they were the original inhabitants of these great lands."
A second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank Network Northwest for, you know, spearheading this. This is, you know, again, if you've looked at this document, this isn't something that just came together today or yesterday. This is probably the work of years, and it shows. I mean, it is really is a quality document that is going to be something that we can use to enhance our parks and recreation. And as most people know, park and recreation is part of our economic development, so it all goes hand in hand. So I think it's been a great job.
Heather, I think we're ready for you now.
Okay.
So we are voting right now on the motion to amend.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. And now we are voting on the amended motion. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution establishing a commercial rehabilitation district pursuant to Public Act 210 of 2005, the city of Manistee has the authority to establish commercial rehabilitation districts within the city of Manistee at the request of a commercial business enterprise. Hotel Ventures Manistee LLC has filed a written request with the clerk of the city of Manistee requesting the establishment of the commercial rehabilitation district for an area in the vicinity of 101 Lake Shore Drive located in the city of Manistee. At this time, council could take action to adopt the resolution establishing a commercial rehabilitation district. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question. Mr. Gamble, we talked about this. We talked about the footprint of the hotel. I see now in the public hearing, you added the retention basin, and now in this other piece, it's in the vicinity of the hotel. Have we expanded this whole thing now? Is there why?
So one of the requirements is a three-acre district where it has to include a qualified food establishment, so we chose to do a three-acre district, which encompasses that retention area, but the only property that it really affects is that lake shore motel property.
Does this mean that we've committed the retention basin to turn it over to the hotel for development? Is that what we're doing here?
No, it doesn't. Just it's creating, that's part of the district, but it has no other effect other than it's a qualifying area of amount of land that's needed to create the district.
Anybody else?
Mr. Saylor, you know, it was brought up earlier during a public comment that there was some question about this qualifying as a rehabilitation district, in your opinion, does it qualify?
It does. There are parts of the qualified facility as described by the speaker that would involve a hotel and various sizes. There are other descriptions or other provisions of that same statute that this particular property would fit. I did also confirm with the clerk that the publication or the public notice of that hearing was at least 10 days in advance, which is a requirement. It is correct, that's a requirement, but that was complied with as well. So yes, under, and we've discussed this and discussed this and discussed this, under the interpretation of that act, we believe that this would qualify.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I would just like to make a comment. Commercial rehabilitation districts in general, I did a little bit of homework on this just to satisfy myself, not knowing how many there are out there or how unique this is. In 2020, the state of Michigan received 39 applications for commercial rehabilitation districts, basically, and they were able to process, I think one of them was declined, and most of them went, the rest of them all went through. There were a few that had different amounts of years on them, but over 30 of them went through with the 10-year. We're not voting on that tonight as far as this goes. We're just establishing the district. But it was good information to have, and it came from areas all over the state of Michigan with much, with similar type, some of them very small populations. The city of Iron Mountain probably doesn't have a very high population, and there are several there. So they are all over the state. It's not, it's obviously not a surprise. It seems like there's some in most of the, I won't say most of the counties, but a goodly portion of them. So I thought that a little bit reassuring to read that. So is there anybody else who has anything? Okay, I think we're ready to take a vote.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Shmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorization for the purchase of 14 self-contained breathing apparatus at, oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I'd like to ask that this item be tabled. I was speaking with Chief Cameron. I think there's some procurement items I want to work through with him, so I'd ask if council would consider tabling this for a future date.
I guess I'll need a motion. I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion to table.
Are you tabling that to a specific meeting, then?
We're actually tabling it until the fire chief can be at the meeting to answer questions and look at the bidding process.
If council would allow the motion to reflect that it's actually postponing, we're not tabling, when you're tabling, you're tabling typically to a specific meeting, and so in this case, we're just postponing it until we can address the concerns of the mayor and the rest of council, so.
At a future
Yeah, so if the motion could reflect that, if there's no objection, then we can proceed.
Make the motion to postpone.
I'll second.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of ordinance 2119 to amend Chapter 863 Food Vendors of the City of Manistee, Michigan Codified Ordinances. The Downtown Development Authority requested an amendment to Chapter 863 Food Vendor Ordinances to allow for short-term food opportunities in the downtown district. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce ordinance 21-19, amend Chapter 863 Food Vendors. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Any discussion?
I think it's a good idea.
Yep. Heather, could you please stand?
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shmansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notices, communications, and announce a report from the Pay Commission and Economic Development. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Is Barry Lynn here? At this time, Mr. Barry Lynn will report on the activities of the Pay Commission and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities. There he is, he's right in the front.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything formal tonight. This is just a verbal report, partly because the Pay Commission hasn't been doing much. We recently just had two meetings, but those were actually the first meetings we had in a year due to pandemic reasons, and then the size of us, our commission right now, we're a five-member commission, and we only have three members. So if we don't have everybody available, we don't have a quorum, so it's been challenging over the course of the last year to actually
So it's been challenging over the course of the last year to actually even meet. But having said that, the last two months, we have had meetings, and I look forward to trying to basically recover from where we are as a commission. And I'm going to kind of give a little bit of a background for what PEG is, how it kind of exists, why we've come about. So the PEG Commission's primary historic role basically comes out of the franchise agreement that the city has with what is now Charter Communications, our cable provider. And under that franchise agreement, there are provisions for local public access television on the cable airwaves. And 25 years ago or so, that was the foundation of what PEG was created. Since that time, we've evolved. We now really represent the city as well as Filer Township and Manistee Township. They both contribute financially to the operations of the commission. So we kind of really represent Charter's footprint in the area. But the other thing more recently, and I would say the last five to 10 years, is really the change in technology that is changing how the world treats public access and what that means to exist in the world we live in. One of the funding sources for PEG is in the city of Manistee. Manistee has opted to impose or to allow Charter to impose a 15 cent per month fee for every Charter cable subscriber. And those funds flow into the PEG Commission. But those funds, which used to be about $6,000 a year, this year are anticipating about $4,500, that trend is continuing and I think is actually speeding up, that fewer and fewer people are using traditional cable as their means of television. Streaming, various online sources are really coming to the forefront and replacing that. So that's changing how PEG needs to exist and be relevant. Because that's not where people go anymore to get access to information like the recording of this meeting that's being recorded and will later this week be available. About five years ago, what we started doing is basically mirroring everything that we had always done through Charter Cable onto our website and the YouTube platform. And actually, that's actually in many ways a much better platform for most people who are comfortable accessing content that way, because you can go forward, you can go back, you can replay things. You can't hear something, you can rewind it. You don't get those opportunities when just watching something on cable television. So what I'm finding is that is where most of the people in the community that care about the types of content that PEG is providing, which are mostly the meetings of the council and the commissions of the city, the Filer Township board meetings, Manistee Township board meetings, and then under the franchise agreement, a public access organization, any member of the community who wants to submit something, we basically have a responsibility to provide them a platform for that content to get distributed as long as it fits within community guidelines. So we're seeing that YouTube and the web are the primary platforms that people are now accessing the content. And in some ways, that's good because we can actually then start measuring how many people are watching, whereas on traditional cable, we have, we would never had any ideas to how many people, other than anecdotally, when people come up to you on the street and say, hey, I saw such and such. As it relates to the city programs that we are broadcasting, by far and away, the most watched are the DDA board meetings. Anywhere from 100 to 200 views per meeting of that content. These meetings, city council, meetings and work sessions would fall in second place. And then anything that has interest of the community. Recent planning commission meetings have sparked some interest for obvious reasons. And what I'm really finding enjoyable now is with the newfound push for all city commissions to get their meetings recorded and getting that content there. I now watched a TREAT Commission meeting, which is the first time I've ever had an opportunity to do that before. So there's a lot of good content out there. So that's a little bit about where we were, what we've been doing, how we're really kind of evolving. A little bit on the technology side is we are hosted physically inside the Manistee Middle High School. So we're kind of in a closet down in the basement where our actual equipment is that connects into the Charter network. And that is actually where we have our monthly commission meetings is over at the high school in their conference room. Couple other things I just wanted to kind of go over is, I've already mentioned some of this, but the two townships that are our partners as well, Filer and Manistee, they provide us financial support, along with in the city limits, it's the Charter subscribers that are contributing through that monthly fee. So that basically forms our revenue side. And realistically, for the last year plus, our expenses have been minimal because I'm volunteering my time. So I serve as the chair of the commission, but I'm also the acting director. So I've been volunteering my time to do the weekly and daily work that's necessary to keep things online. And because I'm volunteering that, we haven't really had many expenses. So we're really, we've been building up a fund balance that we anticipate, once we get to a fully staffed commission, to start using for promotion and marketing and advertising. Because the biggest issue is that most people in the community don't even know we exist because on Charter, we're buried down in one channel's 198 and 199, which you got to scroll a lot to even figure out that we're there. And on YouTube or our website, if you don't know it exists, you don't know to go looking for it. Couple other things is we started a strategic planning process probably about four years ago, and just before the pandemic hit, that was kind of wrapping up. And the board basically had action items to go and basically start engaging with different organizations within the community to kind of gather some input and really kind of set then direction. That's all been placed on hold throughout the pandemic. But one of the areas where that had started, and I think has shown fruit, is just before the pandemic hit, I was having monthly meetings with a news advocate. Because as an organization, they're financially strapped. They don't have the resources that news organizations used to have to send reporters to every meeting that might happen in the area. And they really can benefit from the fact that if the content gets timely posted up onto YouTube, that they don't have to physically leave the office. They can basically review that video content and write their story. Or if they missed something, a meeting that they were at, they can go back and kind of replay it and get that. So, and they've been doing us a favor by, in articles that they produce that, you know, rely on our content, they usually give us some credit on that. So that's kind of an informal form of advertising that gets our name out there. So those are what, those are the things we've been doing. We just need really a fully staffed commission. I've been tapping all of my friends, and I haven't been able to get anyone convinced yet that they want to join this little venture, so. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. A long time ago, when I first moved up here, that was about 20 years ago, there was a, Channel 11 was the real estate channel.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, and everybody who came up here, stayed at a hotel, was able to watch real estate ads for listings. I don't know if it's time to resurrect that in a more modern approach, if that would be helpful. And I don't know if the one real.
I don't know.
If real community wanted to have a discussion about that, I'd be more than happy to brainstorm with them on, on, you know, ideas along those lines. So yeah.
I think anything, you know, obviously, we should be using the airspace if we have it, right?
Yep.
So it seems to me it would be prudent to put all kinds of things on there, you know, community development, what's going on.
And I mentioned it earlier, on Charter, we're on 188 and, or 198, 199. We actually have two channels. Right now, we're just showing the same content on each, but, you know, we could double, triple the amount of content because we have space for it to be broadcast. We just don't have the content right now.
And anybody who could take a decent video could, you know, with their.
Yep.
Even their cell phone.
Cell phones, I mean, are, the camera quality on cell phones are amazing these days.
What about getting schools involved? Get the high school kids to show their stuff on the radio. You got an empty channel.
Yep. I've had those conversations, and so far, the school system has not wanted to, for a variety of reasons, to commit to doing anything along those lines, but.
Okay. Any other council members have something for Barry?
Did, is there any possibility of the PEG taking up a broader view with the internet and with satellite television? Or is it just too hard to get there?
It's really too hard to get there without significant dollars to do that.
Anybody else?
Who, who does upload the meetings? It's not you, it's somebody else? Somebody else uploads them?
Um, right now, I'm getting them from Heather.
Okay, and then you upload them?
Yes.
Okay.
So she delivers them to me, and then I basically do the stuff on the backend to get them shown.
Okay.
Is it just the meetings that you have on those channels?
Again, anything that's provided to us, so we have a couple local churches that have their services available. We have a local gentleman, he's actually one of the fellow commissioners, Mike Tillotson, that attends lots of community events and records them and submits them. So, you know, there is other content, but the majority is generally public meetings.
Well, I was just wondering if like, if you could get with like the chamber or, you know, like have stuff on there like about Slay Bell and like Fourth of July weekend and stuff that's going on.
Mike usually produces things around those.
Okay.
Where there has been other content, and generally, you know, coming up on Slay Bell, I'll pull out something from a couple of years ago. So it's running while people are here so they can kind of get a feeling as to what the parade's going to look like before it happens.
Okay.
I've been to a lot of the parades over the summer, probably because my husband's been, is in the Scottville Palm Band, but I always run into Mike, he's always filming.
Yep.
So he likes.
Although he's slowing down. He's been saying that he may have to stop doing that.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Very informative. Okay. I think now is Mr. Mark Miller's turn to come forward and report on the activities of economic development and respond to any questions this council may have regarding their activities.
Mayor, council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight in front of you and to provide this report. I also want to say thank you for your support of the Hampton Inn project this evening with the creation of the Rehabilitation District. That's very helpful. And, and we are very supportive of that project because of the projected annual spending income that we talked about, of being, having a $17.2 million impact in the community once that is up and open. So thank you for that and for your continued support. Just to reiterate very quickly and briefly, that the Chamber's role is as the economic development organization for the county. Our role is to make business easier for, for new investment, for new development, for existing businesses, for expanding businesses, and to retain those businesses and jobs that we have in our county. Things have been going very well with, with the work. And I can report that in the last three to four months, we've had an increase in our work and cooperation with the development partners for the Gateway Project. So that's been something in the last quarter that has increased and has been very positive. We also, as part of that, have been maintaining our twice a month status calls to keep things moving. And we'll continue to have conversations with the development partners moving forward with assistance on their key milestones. We also, as Stacy Bytkew said, have had some very high-level contacts in the last several weeks that highlight the work that we're doing and the potential for state assistance. To have the MEADC CEO and Lieutenant Governor here to talk about our economic development program, the projects and the potential for growth and for jobs has been, has been tremendous. Part of the work that we've done in the last several months has been to, to launch our economic development portion of the Chamber website. We also have been working on communications, information packets for developers and for VIPs like the Lieutenant Governor. You have an example of that on your desk. But we have been working on those marketing tools as a team, and it's been very positively received. And we've been using those materials from, for developers as well as for new entrepreneurs. So we had conversations even today where we referred them to the resources on the website. You can find that at manistechamber.com to peruse around. But we have segments there for entrepreneurs, for developers, and also information on the communities and information. So all the things that you would see in the economic development program to promote the area and to recruit business and investment is on that website. Our business retention, business retention expansion, business have been going very well. We've had 19 in the last four months. We're hearing a number of things from different sectors. We have business expansion in the county for, for manufacturing jobs. We've heard that a couple of times and been offering support for those, for those manufacturers. We also have helped on the other end of the spectrum, brand new startups that, you know, some businesses do not survive their first year. So we've been focusing on some of the new businesses, especially in downtown Manistee, to help them with, with their information there. So that is going very well, and we will continue to work through that. You have been receiving monthly and, and the quarterly report as well, it's also in the packet, information that we can provide to you so that you're aware of what those visits look like and what some of the issues are that are coming up. We also have been working on the redevelopment-ready community certification sites, working with MEADC. We've had several meetings and conversations with building owners and MEADC to try to get through the scope of work that is needed and to, to help promote those sites as, as part of this community's priority sites. You've all helped pick those sites out last February, and we're continuing to see a lot of, a lot of movement and interest in those sites. So we're working with MEADC on that. And, and I will, I can, I can also tell you that we've met with the Wagner Center to, to look at one of that, that potential for, as an RRC site, for a request for proposal. So MEADC has stated that they can help and assist with putting out those 13 acres for senior development as, as a site that they would help promote and help put together. So they can help us with that heavy lift. And so we're, we're hoping to advance that in the, in the coming months. So that is, in short, what we have. We continue to stay in communication with you on our progress, and I'll pause now for any questions you might have.
Mark, if they did the project over by the Wagner Center, would that be middle-income apartments or what?
Remains to be seen, council member. The, the RFP could spell out what kind of development would be attracted to that, and so that can be spelled out, and, and that will be done in partnership with the Wagner Center. So, I know that Sarah Howard has, has some, has some ideas somewhere to go, and we need to continue to flesh those out and help deliver what product the, that her and her board would like to see there.
I know, I thought that was a good idea when they were planning those apartments.
Yeah.
I was looking to work in, move in. Get a great idea over there.
Well, it might be a few years to get that rolling through, to get an RFP and to get a development, but, so, we'll, we'll see what we can do about that, and, and we'll let the board and Sarah kind of guide that, guide that discussion.
Can you share anything about the Hotel Northern?
Sure. So, and I know that Zach's in, in the room from the planning, the planning department. We are in, both of us, Zach and I both are in contact with the developer. The building has closed, and they're working towards the site plan, which they were working with, with Zach on, and they are kind of piecing together what their next steps might be. And so, we're in this early discussion with them on a, on a project that will include a mixed-use, commercial and residential development, but beyond that, I think that's probably where I need to leave it on the details. But, it's very exciting. This developer came in with resources and with prior experience and knowledge on, on how to do a historic rehabilitation like that project. So, anticipating some really great things and some exciting, exciting product at the end of it. But, we're, as a county, as a community, we're attracting that type of investor, we're attracting that sort of, of resourced developer, and that's a really positive step for us. So, we'd like to see more like that individual and, and his company, and, and hopefully there'll be more, more in the future.
Mark, is there anything to be done at the Old Kennedy School? Every time I drive through Parkdale, like, friends look at that place and wonder if it's ever going to get turned over, any process happen there?
That is a really good question and a very interesting parcel. I think that there is a strong potential with the location, with this access to water and sewer, a hookup through the township, that you could find a developer for that. It's important to note that the county land bank might be a, a strong tool for the redevelopment of that, to provide the incentives to take that project and property on, and we're looking and to, to that as a tool for the future. I think that those types of parcels where you have serious blight, large project, large building, will be something that will require an incentive for rehabilitation or for redevelopment, so...
A good thing on the plan.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's a, and it's something to look for in the future, as we keep working and supporting this, this work we're doing.
I have a couple of questions. What's going on with 314-7?
That's a great question. Back in July, we, well, let me, let me just cut to the quick and give you a short answer. We don't see a lot moving on that project with the developer, and city staff and myself have all tried to assist the developer with that project, but we haven't seen any city, any plans for development that have gone into, to Zach at County, County Planning Department or City Zoning Administrator. Nothing is moving on that.
Does he not, is there not a timeframe on that? Is it just, like, open-ended? I can't remember what his plans were when he brought it up, and I know it's switched a few times on what he wanted to do, but I'm just wondering if there's like a timeframe that you can, we can rescind that?
Yeah. So, City Council has the ability to, to rescind that after a period of time if there's no, if there's no progress. And so, we've had discussions, as recently as this morning, about what to do with that particular issue, and I'll let Bill kind of, Bill has kind of the next step, so if you...
Yeah, I think just establishing a deadline, things like that, I think the assessor talked about this next year, it'll still, it still has to have that incentive in, but then the next, the next year can be in question. And it's about the city having a policy for things like this. If we don't see movement, being able to have a policy to say...
Have a policy right now?
I think, I think we're working on one, and I think we can set up deadlines, and that's, that's what we're talking about this morning, is kind of making sure we're, we're consistent and we, I don't think we've had one quite like this where it's not moving. So, I think it's important to, to, you know, we're going to be looking at this one closely and setting up deadlines.
Yeah, I think we need to give him a deadline, like, if he can't get it together, like, it needs to be resolved.
And may I just add one more thing, council member, that back in July, and it's on this report here in very vague terms, but the Chamber pulled together city staff and the developer to try to encourage him to focus on what was needed, and we had a, a very good meeting. The city assessor delivered a very stern message that you needed to make progress, and so, but, but here we are now, it's November, and, you know, I think that, you know, another message needs to be delivered.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I just have one more question about the, under your bottom line, like, the contacts, like, what exactly is that? Like, who does that pertain to?
Okay. The, the contacts are going to be any developer, entrepreneur, any business owner that has come in with something serious beyond, you know, a business retention question or, or need for assistance. So, it's kind of everything segregated out by, by our geographic area, because you want to know where we're working with in terms of downtown versus the city, and the county also needs to know those numbers. So, we're lumping all of those in for a metric on the number of times that we have contact with an entrepreneur, a business owner, or a developer.
Okay. Well, Mark, I want to thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Could, could I ask one question? I was just reading this first part here. Can you explain to me where it says that you were a certified redevelopment-ready community? What qualifies us, what are the criteria for being a certified redevelopment?
So, this is a program under the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and in order to be certified, you have to follow certain zoning practices and, and be able to demonstrate that you can work with developments, work with developers in certain areas. The certification took place, I believe, several, more than, more than several years ago, I believe five years ago, but I'm not entirely sure of that. But we have been working on recertifying every year with reporting that the County Planning Department does, along with the Chamber and the city, and we also keep the priority sites updated and go back to City Council and boards and commissions to help select those as required under the program. So, we're in good standing at the moment, and we, we'll be able to, as a result of being in that program, be able to get marketing and assistance for those priority sites so that it can be redeveloped. We also, just within the last week and a half, submitted a grant to MEADC called Match on Main, which the only way that we were able to qualify for that grant was, application, was because we are an RRC city. So, there are benefits to that program, and it signals to developers that we're a community that can be worked with and have the right zoning ordinances in order to enable development to happen.
So, in other words, somebody who might want to develop somewhere would look at this and say, "Oh, Manistee's ready to do this"?
Perfect. Yep.
I got one more question. I might be completely wrong on this. I feel like I read somewhere that there was other towns that had, like, a downtown district like we do, and if there was a vacant storefronts that there, the store owners could be fined for, because I remember you talking about people not wanting to lease out their buildings and it being, them being vacant. Is that some...
That is a, an option for the City Council. Other communities do use more of a stick approach to vacant downtown properties, so that could be explored. I know that our DDA point person, Christina Bykha, has, has looked into that, and I believe we, we might have had some other conversations there, but that is something the City Council could do to help move some of those vacant or underutilized buildings along, so, but I'd have, in order to speak on it confidently, it might need Christina to come up, but that would be something we can explore and, and talk to, talk to you all about in the future.
Well, I'm just, yeah, I think it would be something to talk about, since a lot of those buildings have been vacant for a very long time.
And we have a lot of interest. There is interest in the downtown. We struggled all of last year with about six different entrepreneurs looking for space, and for a variety of reasons couldn't find it or locate it. Joanne Snee is a great example, Purple Paintbrush, she's just about to open, but she looked for a number of months to find something that was suitable and just, just had a very difficult time. But thankfully, she's about to open and is downtown, but, and we've also, you know, directed these entrepreneurs to many of the building owners, and just, it's very difficult to, to do that, but if we had a few more spaces, the ones that are underutilized, that might be something that would really help with the, with our goals of utilizing and having a vibrant downtown.
Okay. I'm just waiting to see if there are any more comments for Mark. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a good evening.
Citizens comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to come, oh, yeah, this is a opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. You have a comment? You may step to the podium, state your name and address. Not seen. All right, moving on to city and staff. Mr. Gamble, I bet you have a lot to report on.
Thank you, Mayor. So, last week, we started distributing, giving out filters to qualified residents as part of that lead exceedance. We did have those three high lead levels above that 15 parts per billion of the 20 homes. So, we are giving out filters to qualified residents, pregnant women in the house, if the, the home has pregnant women in the house or a child under 18 in the house for a period of time, and they can't afford a filter, they are eligible, and they can pick that up at the DPW, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday. So far, we've had 31 residents pick up the faucet mount and 10 pick up the pitcher filter, so those are available. Of those three homes, we're confident on the city side, those four connection points do not have lead. There is one that they haven't visually verified, and that's at the main, so I've asked that they inspect that as well, so, and that would mean that those high lead levels were in the home, and it's just important, I think part of this is awareness about in the home, older faucets, solder-on-copper pipes before 1988, old aerators, just being aware to replace those items. The goal is zero lead, and I think that's the reason for these change in standards with the lead and copper that EGO put out. So, we do have water testing kits available through Trace Analytical. That is at the cost of the resident, though it's $27.50 per test, but those are available at DPW if someone's interested, and that's kind of the way to find out what's going on in your home, and we're asking that residents share that with the city when they, if they do submit their water for testing, let us know of their results. Thank you.
Mr. Searn.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you. Sean Milton?
Just real quick, Mayor, two major projects, the Riverbank... You know, we've got two major projects that are coming to conclusion. The Riverbank project, we've completed putting in the dune grass, and we've got a little bit of curb and gutter to do at the entrance down into the boat launch, so that project is getting very close to completion. And then the Jackson Van Buren Water Main and Road Reconstruction Project. Today, they just finished up putting in the last couple of driveways. By the end of the week, the residents will be able to use the driveways, and that project will be at substantial completion. There'll be some topsoil seeding things to do, so, just want to let you know on those two projects, it's been a long time coming all summer long, and they're near completion.
Thank you very much. Let's see, what can I call it next? Chief Glass.
I love it, Your Honor, thank you.
Did I get everybody on that? Okay, let's see. Mark Sacola, Mike Sacola, Department and Zach. You guys want to come up together? Okay.
I've, I've got one for you, and Mike has one pretty well, as well. I included a memo for you guys, it's just kind of an update from the Planning Commission. I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that it didn't die on the table. We did, I did have the, the Planning Commission look at the RV and boat ordinance and the parking and everything. The, the Planning Commission ultimately decided that that wasn't something that, that there was real high concern with. What they're, what, what's there now is, is already difficult in trying to, to work within those, or outside of those parameters with, based on other communities, I think. It was just deemed, you know, unnecessary work, so, just wanted to make sure that you guys knew I didn't let that die, so, that was a follow-up.
Well, thank you. Do you think we need to do anything further with that issue? For that? Well, that's different.
I'll take a look at it with the Planning Department, I can let you know.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Hi, Mike.
Hi. Haven't been here in a while, guys, sorry about that. Been busy around the county. So, I just wanted to give a, a real quick, I know you guys kind of, we're asking about the RRC program. You guys were actually recertified last year, in January 31st of 2020. It's good for five years. You're recertified out to 2025. There's two different levels within the RRC program. You guys are actually recertified at the higher level. There is an RRC 2.0 rolling out quickly with additional requirements. There's two different levels, and I don't know them off the top of my head. The lower one was actually requested from rural communities, because they felt that the requirements of the whole RRC program were too much, but you guys are actually certified at the higher level. We worked with the Chamber to identify the priority sites on this last time around. It's something that we have to do every year. I anticipate a, us working more frequently together as more economic development-related activities are within that RRC program, and really, it's about streamlining the process for developers, as Mark was saying, laying out when they come in for forms, like, what guidelines and timelines are going to be on there, what they can expect when they walk into a community, so that they're, they're not blindsided by it. When a community's coming in to look at, if they're looking or interested in developing in there, what they would like to know is, you know, basically that there're not going to be any hiccups with their process and what, and laid out really easily for them. Mark is well aware of this, he works really well with them, and, you know, we're looking forward to working together to keep, continue to keep you guys certified at the higher level, so...
I, I have a question for you.
Yep.
Mr. Gabrowski was talking about the Old Kennedy School. Is that something that you can contact the, the owner? I mean, the roof is blowing off that, they're just going to let it just keep deteriorating?
Yeah, I mean, so that's outside of an area that we provide zoning services for, but there was a brownfield agreement that was signed initially, and there was some contact with us about re-upping that agreement, and I don't think the county brownfield, without serious limitations on, and timeline set on when they... serious limitations on, and timeline set on when they would do things, was willing to re-enter into that, and when those were brought forth to the developer, they walked away essentially from that conversation with at least the brownfield authority at that time for the county. We cannot implement anything on there that would, you know, it does resemble what I would consider a blighted building at this point, but that's something that would have to be taken up with like Manassas Township if they wish to enforce it.
Okay.
Right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. I don't think anybody's left. Nothing for you, Dave?
I'm ready.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask about the, I've had a couple of people approaching me about the lead levels, and if, is it published where the areas are that that's happening? And I'm like, I know we just took 20 samples, but I didn't know if it was in houses, if it was just on streets, or exactly how it was all done. I want to inform them with the right information, so could you help me understand that?
And Mr. McCula would probably tell you, but there's 20 sites that the city tested, and it's part of the requirement was 20 sites every year. They go out and kind of ask people to do it in a variety of places. They're supposed to, as due diligence, look for different homes where they think it would be a problem and test. The 20 that were found, I think, were spread throughout, they were spread throughout the city, so residential homes. Now, our testing requirements are going to go from 20 a year to 40 every six months, so we'll be doing that. But as I say, we retested, there were some procedures that our water department found with the three that were high, how they went about taking the test. It's supposed to sit for six hours, and when they did retest, they were below those levels, but Eagle said those first levels count. I think a lot of this is after Flint. It's making sure that if there's any, you know, possibility of high lead, making sure that notice gets out there. A lot of communities have gone through this, but I think it's all to raise awareness about lead in the water and the sources of lead in the water. So, I get you more specifics as well, if you'd like.
And I say water, lead in our water, we're providing, right, is lead in the pipes?
Correct, yeah.
That serve at the hop, correct?
Yeah, that is correct, yeah.
And are we responsible for everything up to the house? And then the houses, homeowners are responsible for anything that's going on from the house?
So, I think it's about, it's 18 inches past the meter, so there's some connection points before the meter, after the meter, the lead service, if there's a lead service line, which we haven't found any of those, some communities have those, but there's these lead gooseneck connections that can cause a problem. And anything that's galvanized downstream from the, from a lead gooseneck, galvanized pipes tend to collect sediment and can collect those pieces of lead as well.
So, if we find it, who's responsibility falls on?
If you, if you think you have a lead gooseneck, which is kind of a bulbous, we have, I think, a picture on the website, on our city website under lead, but it's kind of, the connection looks like a little bulb, is the best way to describe it. But if you think you have one, please contact the water department, we'd like to take a look, and if we find those, we replace those.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Solomon?
You got nothing?
Oh, sure. Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gabowski?
Can you tell me, what does the city pay for the lights on the telephone, when the streetlights are, what do we pay for light?
The tariff of the streetlights? I would have to look that up. It's been a while since I looked at the tariffs, but I could find that out for you.
Well, we have a lot of lights out, and I've been going around at night writing them down because we've been calling them in. Josh, I would like to ask you if your men could write around, make a list for me, and I will call them in, so, because obviously the people ain't doing them, and there's a lot of lights out. It's really a mess. So, I'd like to call them in and get the city to rally for the streetlights.
I know there's nine of them out on River Street, and that's a concern, and I think it's a, to me, that's a public safety issue.
I can go down the streets and show you Second and Maple, a whole bunch of them. So, we've been calling them in, and some of them are blinking and that, so they're going out, so if the guys could get me a list, I'd probably call them in. Thank you.
Just wondering, is there a last call dates set up for leaf pickup? And if so, if we could put something out? I see they did a good job, and they got all the streets cleared up, and then we had, you know, snow, and now we've got basically yards in the trees are full again, so just wondering when we could publish the next date? Or if, or if the homeowner's responsible now for gathering them up and putting them in bags, just so that we can let people know.
Yeah, I'm talking about, I believe, Jeff, last week, they started the bulk leaf pickup, so I wouldn't think it would stop so soon, so I think we're safe for a little while.
But it would be, you know, again, what happens, once the heavy snows come in, then it becomes where they're just plowed back into the...
Back into the...
So, just, if we could just let people know that, hey, you know, if you get your leaves out by this time, we'll take care of it, kind of thing, and then after that, you're on your own, and you need to be bagging them up and taking care of them yourself after such a date, if that would be helpful, because, I mean, some people won't, but a lot of people will if they know that nobody's going to come and gather them.
We'll post that on the website and on Facebook. That's good, thank you.
And then the other one is, we talked about a reservation system for parks. Just curious if we've gotten anywhere?
Yes, I met with Ed Bradford, and I think we're, want to look at a similar system to what we do over, I believe, by the harbor there. So, we want to do something there, maybe it would be posted, maybe three months at a time at the pavilion, at the Lions Pavilion, in a glass case. We're kind of looking at a TV, but I think concerned about some vandalism with that. But I think a case that gets updated weekly, three months out over the summer, I think is what we're looking at doing at this point. So, we will be coming back to council with that recommendation, but in meeting with that, I think that's probably the most practical first step to take.
My question for the evening is, are the restrooms, the public restrooms, being locked up at night? What time do they get locked up?
They are, they are, they do lock up at night. I think they have the self-locking, I believe, I think it's probably seven or eight, but I'd have to confirm with Mr. McCula.
Okay, and that's on all parks like Duffy Park and Reese Park?
I believe so.
Do we have automatic locks there? That's really all I have. I just want to thank everybody for their time and their patience tonight. I know I skipped around a little bit, backtrack on the agenda, I apologize for that. Do we have a meeting next week? We do, don't we?
We have a study session, yes.
Okay, all right. So, I guess we'll see you next week. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Okay.